Okay, I think we're live. Let's just assume we're live and people are laughing at us.
Let's say that we're live now.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey there, just in case we might be live.
If you are out there and you are watching, we are getting ready to have our At Ease.
Yes, we are 100% live and we probably have been live for a couple of minutes.
Well, if you heard me singing, this is the song that doesn't end. What is that, Lamb Chop? I don't know.
I don't want to be a part of that.
That was just to get your attention. So, good evening and thank you for joining. You're supposed to go first.
Oh, and this is At Ease with Thea and?
We really, really, really appreciate your patience as you allowed us to sort of get through a bit of unexpected back and forth today for the convening of the 2020 special session. We really wanted to tell you what to expect while we were on the floor, but business did not allow us to do so. But many of you who observe At Ease already know that. Do is talk a little bit about what went on today and talk about what to expect moving forward, how to continue to engage our legislation and so forth. And so I thought that I would start with just talking about-
Why do you sound so soft? Can you speak up? And can we have some energy and not act like we've been sitting on a basketball court for six hours today?
Well, you know, since I started out this live singing a Lamb Chop song, I thought I should actually bring it down a little bit because-
Oh, I'm hyped. So, sorry. I'm gonna go mute while you're talking.
So I want to get the information out in case anybody else was turned off by the Lamb Chop opening. So I'll start with talking about the appropriations meeting. That took place this morning at 9:30 before we actually convened at the Segal Center. And so I just want to hit a few of the high points that the governor mentioned as part of his budget presentation. And so just to take a step back, the reason why we convened is because a lot of money was unalotted from the budget that we passed during the 2020 session as a result of, you know, the economic hardships and just turmoil that we were experiencing as a result of the pandemic. And so now that we have a reforecast that has occurred and we have a better idea of what the Commonwealth's finances look like, the governor is in a better position to not just project what expenses we can afford along with the Secretary of Finance, but also reiterate some of the initiatives that we need as a result of the pandemic. So in his presentation and prior to the presentation, actually, he talked about an historic investment in the expansion of accessing broadband. I believe he said 85 million. As you know, with everyone working virtually, with many school systems deciding to offer either a hybrid model or virtual model, you know, having access to broadband and just connectivity generally is critical. Another initiative that he mentioned in his budget is sort of 3.3 million in funding to establish the eviction prevention and diversion pilot. If you have tracked anything that Delegate Price and I have been doing, you know that the issue around evictions is a major one. Families all across the Commonwealth are really suffering right now because of their inability to pay their rent and/or mortgages. And so this is also an investment that the governor is proposing to make. And I should also add as a caveat, he is proposing a pause on evictions until at least April 30th, 2021, as landlords and tenants sort of work through the process of working out this payment plan. And then I would say, I think there's a lot of people who continue to be interested in higher ed and K-12. And he presented a proposal of 15 million for Virginia's HBCUs. This was something that we were fighting for extremely hard during the 2020 session. And now that that money was unalotted and we were not certain as to where we would land in that regard, it was great news to hear him say he's going to maintain that investment. And so those are some of the high notes. You know, we will, the Appropriations Committee will actually be meeting again tomorrow to go through more of the specifics regarding this presented budget from the governor. But actually, in the House side, it's not the same in the Senate. If we want to introduce amendments to the governor's budget, we have until Thursday to do so. So we've already been told for the most part, though, that the priorities will continue to be on, you know, K-12, higher ed, all of these things that need to be funded to support relief for COVID-19. And so anything really too far beyond that scope is not going to be fully considered, especially because the governor has been really deliberate about leaving additional dollars. I think about 500 million, maybe, if I recall correctly, available so that in the event that we do get an uptick and our number of people who contract COVID and we need additional resources, we will have money to do so. So that's how we started off the day. Now, as we segue to the Segal Center, Delegate Price, why don't you tell us about that? But you gotta come off mute today.
Listen, and we talked about that today every time. So I'm trying to keep an eye on our comments as well. And so there was the comment that was just making sure that we were talking about both rural areas and urban areas. So whether it's broadband access based on infrastructure or broadband access based on affordability, we are taking both into account because we want, what was it? 200,000 K through 12 students and 60,000 college students that currently are not connected to the internet. And we are, for whatever reason, and we're trying to make sure that they are fully connected. And Delegate Erin, look what I got. So y'all, this is the budget. This is the budget. So when y'all ask us questions in these comments, no, we will get back to you. We were in session all day. But yes, so then we showed up today. We gavelled in at 1 o'clock at the Segal Center at Virginia Commonwealth University. Go Rams! They were gracious hosts for us so that we could be on the basketball court because we have 100 members and we needed to have social distancing. So you can check out our previous posts on our pages about what that looked like, but it was really cool. And the Clerk's Office did an amazing job with IT and all of that. We had, it looked like, you know, we were in the House, you know, House chambers. But if you were watching, you may be walking away like, what just happened, right Delegate Erin? And so special session, what'd you say?
It was a lot to keep track of.
A lot, a lot. And it was a long day. But special session is different than reconvene session. So this is like a mini regular session. And so we had to have resolutions and rules and things. So we started off with House Resolution, Joint Resolution 5006. So basically, this would have said all of the topics we can talk about. It limited every member to three bills, no more than three bills. And then it went into how the budget would be handled. And so a House Joint Resolution was to be agreed upon by the House and the Senate. So it passed the House. It did not pass the Senate. So House Joint Resolution 5006 no longer exists. But we still needed rules to guide us. And so that then turned into a regular Resolution 517. So we have that same document. It's just for the House. So we now have our rules and it says that we're going to be talking about, just like Delegate Erin said, we're going to be talking about the budget. We're going to be talking about police reform and criminal justice and social justice reforms, impacts on health, education, state, local government, all of that. We'll put a link up to it just so you know how the House rules will go. And then the Senate passed their own rules. So then we were trying to do Zoom for our meetings because I'll tell you this, sitting there for six hours in a mask and worried about what I was touching and who was coughing. There were so many coughs. There were so many coughs. But just, it's a lot, but not only that, not only just for the members. When we come home, our families, when the staff goes home, their families, like VCU staff was there. Like y'all, it really is still a pandemic. I know y'all are out and about, but it really is still a pandemic. And it's 2020. So we were trying to move to be able to do everything digital. So we have House Resolution 514, which is a rules change to basically say we can do all the things electronic. So how you may have watched the joint courts and public safety meetings where we had people come in to give testimony. They came, you know, you could put in your written comments or whatever. You could see us. We could, you know, see you when you came into the room to talk, all of that right here. And so when you change the rules, you have to get two-thirds of the vote. So we were not able to get two-thirds of the vote. So this, the, to rush it, right? That it was, it was, it was the motion to suspend so that we could vote on it today. That's what did not get two-thirds of the vote, died on a party line vote. So this will now sit there for five days. And that means that at noon for the next five days, you will see us. But you will see us online because we passed a resolution 516 that just needed, oh, excuse me, 515 that just needed a simple majority to say that at least we can do those five days electronically until the big resolution is passed. So-
And Delegate, and Delegate Price, I think it's important to Jess, for context, if you're just joining or if you're not sure on what Delegate Price is describing, as a body, we have to have these rules to govern how we operate for the special session. So we can't just show up and take our vote, roll call, say that we're here and jump right into the business. We have to adopt rules that will govern the process, especially in a virtual environment. And so when he says that we'll just sit there for five days, literally, we cannot conduct any additional business hearing our committees, hearing the legislation that people are introducing, none of it.
We might, because of, because of the 514, we might be able to meet to talk, but we can't vote. So like if there needs to be a bill markup or something real quick, that might happen. So stay tuned. But tomorrow at noon, Delegate Erin, where will we be? On Zoom.
On Zoom.
Like, like we're on now. So for, yeah, for the next five days at noon, we will have Zoom committee, I mean Zoom floor session in order to advance to hopefully when that passes and then we can just do our committee work. So the Senate was in person today and they started hearing their bills in person. That is not the route that we are choosing to go in the House. But if you go to lisvirginia.gov, you can at least see the bills that we have dropped to see, you know, which committees might get which bills. So those were our procedural resolutions. So it took six hours. But we did get to a place where we have rules that are guiding our process and we have a rules change that is waiting. And then for the next five days at noon on Zoom, and we'll drop some of these links in there so you can see how to watch it. And yeah, so Delegate Erin, do you want to talk about some of your bills?
Yes. So now that we have the resolution that we will continue to show up to hear and vote on, we can talk a little bit about the legislation. As you know, this session was called to address COVID-19 policies, criminal justice reform, policing. And I'm excited that I'll be carrying several bills that I feel like are long overdue, but also will be critical to my district. Now, we need to share with you that there's one caveat about this special session. Each member in the House is limited to three bills. So although we have so many ideas and although I have to tell you, I have an even longer list of bills that I felt like needed to be addressed, most of those will have to wait until the full session in January when we normally reconvene. And so I tried to select the bills that I felt like were time sensitive, could not wait, were needed immediately. And I'm going to talk a little bit about those. So on the-
And Delegate Erin, the ones that might be a little bit easier too, because we have such short time, right?
So that's exactly right. And I think the other thing I'll add is it's been made very clear that even with the three bills that we have chosen to introduce, all of them may not receive a hearing. So there is a lot to monitor there and just a little time, a little bit of time to do it. So just really quickly, for those of you that are joining, for COVID-19, I'm really excited to be carrying a bill that will establish an emergency debt repayment plan for jurisdictional and non-jurisdictional utilities. So that's your water, your gas and your electric. Right now, many of these companies are already working with their customers to set up payment plans if you have a bill that's in the arrears. However, that payment plan is typically between six to 12 months. The legislation that I'm carrying will allow for you to have a 24-month payment plan period. And also it's to be no more than 4% of your income. And we selected that with the idea in mind that if you have electricity bill utility, you also have a water bill utility and then you might also have a gas bill utility. And so if you're on payment plans for all these utilities, that can get pretty steep really quickly, especially if you do not have employment right now. So we're hopeful that, and we've been working really closely with the utilities, but we're hopeful that putting this language into the code will allow for some uniformity on how your utilities are working with its customers. And the caveat for this is it's only during a public health emergency. It's not permanently. But just try and give people a little bit of relief during this period of time. The other thing that I'll be carrying is a resolution declaring racism, a public health crisis. And I think this isn't critical because we've seen disproportionate rates of minority and black communities being impacted by this pandemic. But it's not just this pandemic. When you look at sort of all types of health outcomes across the Commonwealth, we often see that there's a disproportionate outcome or impact, I should say, when you look at minority and black communities. And that has a lot to do with the systems in which they're operating. And so I think acknowledging the fact that racism is a public health crisis and it has a direct impact on health outcomes, we can then operate from the lenses of, now how do we change that system? How do we provide additional resources for these systems to repair some of the damage that exists right now? And the last two that I'll mention is I'll also be carrying a full prohibition on the use of no-knock search warrants. You probably have heard about this, justice for Breonna Taylor first and foremost, but you likely have heard about this use of a search warrant. And in the Commonwealth, you'll be surprised to know that we actually do not address no-knock warrants in the Code of Virginia. There is no laying out its use. There's no language sort of laying out accountability for its use. And so not only will we add its use to the Code of Virginia, we will prohibit its use and make it so that no law enforcement officer should be using the no-knock warrant. And if they do, and if they obtain any information that is, if they obtain information that's obtained by use of no-knock warrants, it will be inadmissible in court. And then also, just to be clear, right now, there is nothing in the code that says when someone arrives at your property to conduct a search that they must provide you with a copy of that warrant as an occupant, as an owner. And so the additional language that we're adding to this is to make it very clear that when a law enforcement officer shows up, not only do they have to reiterate their authority to be there and to serve you with this warrant, but they also need to provide you with a copy of the warrant itself. And then lastly, I will be carrying legislation that will codify the use of, or really the definition of excessive force. Right now, that has been purely operating from a case law standpoint. And so with a firm definition of excessive use of force, with also adding a prohibition on the use of neck restraints, that makes it very clear in the Commonwealth, the types of topics that we consider to be excessive use of force and when those things are not to be allowed and tolerated. So I'm excited about those bills. Again, we're only allowed to carry three. So the remaining criminal justice reforms that I plan to propose, we will introduce those during the full General Assembly session in 2021.
Right. So, so your, before we get to mine, your idea for the, the public health crisis, I love it because it helps us redefine health in a more broad way. And so when we're talking about like the health of a community, like what might that look like? And then just really delving into how racism impacts it. Can you talk more about what that might look like or what your hopes might be for how we use it? Oh, but you on the spot.
Yeah, well, actually, I'm going to address this quick question I see from Jeff Clark. Jeff, you seem to have a question about racism. I'm not sure I understand your question, but yes, racism is a public health crisis and I'd be happy to talk with you more about that. But as it pertains to why you're paying $1,500 a month for your health insurance, which is a very high deductible, I don't disagree with you. And I don't believe that that's acceptable either. And, and we are additionally trying to look at resources and we have been for some time. If I could go back through bills that we have been looking at even during the 2020 session to try and address people and families who are in situations where they have high deductibles. But that doesn't eliminate the fact that when we're talking about in this moment, people being adversely impacted by a system that doesn't recognize the inequity that the system was built on, quite frankly.
So that must be on your page.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Jeff, come on, let's talk, let's talk. But I'm gonna let you handle your page. I'm gonna handle my page and then we'll keep it all peaceful. But yeah, so again, as you said, you know, justice for Breonna Taylor, say her name. Like, we need to make sure that as the systems continue to work in other places, that justice is the goal for what's happening. But one of the bills that I'm working on, and remember, all of these pieces that we're talking about, we are not talking about these pieces like any of these individual bills are going to end racism or are going to end the issues within the law enforcement realm or criminal justice realm. These are parts of packages. So if you have not checked out the Virginia Legislative Black Caucus Agenda, please do so. Because once you look at that, it's a bit more comprehensive and we'll make sure to put that link there too. But in, in current code, for some reason, a lot of city attorneys are telling police chiefs that they can't really talk to each other about, like, let's say, for instance, if I'm leaving the Newport News Police Department and I'm going to the Petersburg Police Department, that the police chiefs can't talk to each other about the experience that they had with me as one of their employees. And I'm just like, everywhere else, everywhere else, you know, you pick up a phone and say, how was this? You know, like you have references, you can talk about things. And so we are working to clarify and mandate some things around there so that information sharing is available within reason for a sheriff or a police, police chief to be able to talk about some things. Because what we don't want to do is people who are problematic be able to continue to just kind of hop from precinct, I mean, from department to department. If you are problematic, find another job, like do something else, be better. But you will not be a police officer, you know, for the police chiefs that want that ability. And so they do, do support that to be able to hire the best and the brightest to be on our streets. The other, I'll come back to that one because that is a different topic. So then there are training standards that the Department of Criminal Justice Services and one of the committees come up with. And in the code, it mandates a couple of things that they have to have, you know. And so in this minimum standard, so this is not excellence. This is like minimum standards. So what we are trying to do is raise the minimum standard. And so I was working with, oh man, this goes back a couple of years. Shout out to Josie, who was with New Virginia Majority at the time. And we talked about making sure that when an officer arrives on the scene, they can be trained to be able to differentiate between someone who is absolutely being belligerent versus someone who might have a mental health crisis, someone who might have a developmental disability or someone who might be on a substance, because we just need to treat all of that differently. And so shout out to the folks at the ARC, who I heard so much from with their personal stories that it just like literally broke my heart. Like, I'm not a crier, but that one kind of got to me because it was people who cannot control their actions. And the presence of an armed person, stranger, whatever, can escalate a situation. And so there are other conversations happening about, you know, crisis response teams and Marcus Alert. So like I said, these are pieces, but it would also mandate awareness of systemic and individual racism. So for anybody in our comments that ever doubts whether or not racism is real, not only will they learn about individual racism and how you can be racist to each other, but how systems perpetuate racism. And so we think that that is important. And then it would also make these 30, what is it, 39, 36, 39, 30, more than 30, training academies that right now have different curriculums, different curriculums at all 39. So depending upon where you went, you came out with different training, it would make that uniform. And so we are, we are really happy with that. So this bill is going to be worked on with another bill. Oh, and it also mandates a mental health evaluation prior to joining the force. So that, that got picked up and put into a bill that another delegate is going to be working on. And just want to let y'all know, three years of my life went into that. And I'm very proud of the work that I have done with those community advocates that brought that to our attention and talked about the need for it. And so another one is, I think, so, so there has been talk about when the Attorney General's Office would be able to investigate patterns of racism or patterns of abuse of force and all. So I was working on one that would actually designate the human, human rights, the Division of Human Rights within the Attorney General's Office to investigate when law enforcement basically commits crimes. So instead of their own department doing the investigation for when a crime is committed. And that would include murder and so excessive use of force. And so that would allow for an outside entity to give an independent, you know, non-attached view of that. And we're hopeful that we can make some strides on that because when you're kind of, you know, investigating yourself, da, 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 you know, okay, we get it. And then, so Congressman Scott had been working on a death in custody bill literally before Freddie Gray was murdered. And then it finally got passed, but it hasn't been appropriated in a way that is trickled down to states and become mandated, mandated for states. So whenever the federal messes up, what do we do Delegate Erin? We make it a state priority. And so I have a bill that basically states, and I define custody as once someone has been detained. So if you arrive at a scene and you're interacting with me and I die, that, that is not custody per se, but that is a part of this bill. And so we are looking for data. We are looking for mandated reporting because we cannot measure trends for the things that we don't know are happening. And I just cannot believe that nobody has to report when they kill somebody. So, or if an accident happens, you know, whatever the death is. So that is one.
Virginia. But you're in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Are you still surprised by things?
You know, my hopeful optimism has me surprised on a daily basis and that's why this job is so crazy. And then Delegate Erin, I had similar ideas on this, but right now, this, there is a committee that is handling writing the training standards, but it is the people that do the training. And they don't really have someone that's over them. So we wanted to, well, I wanted to reshift that and put them under the Department of Criminal Justice Services so they have someone that they had to talk to. Because this one has been two years, two years?
Yes.
17, 18, yeah, 18, 19. So this might be, yeah, because I think we pulled out those bills 18, 19. It's been too long. It's been too long. And the full redo, gosh, I think somebody said the full redo of the standards hadn't been done since the 80s. So I'm sitting there watching My Little Pony or whatever. We haven't done it since then. Like, that's, that's not okay. And then shifting to evictions. Erin, Delegate Erin and I have, have talked about housing. We are both together on the housing sub, Housing and Consumer Protection Sub, and we serve together. And I think we did a lot of good work, if you would not mind me bragging on you a little bit, Delegate Erin. So I was on NPR the other day and it was pretty cool to have my uncle play it back to me. It was like, I heard you on the radio. But they were asking me about black women that serve in state legislatures. And it's like, we are on record as getting things done for our communities. And often there's better benefits when we're in charge and, and like just the things that we're doing for our community. So one of the things that I said was basically like, wherever you put us, we're going to do the work. And also policies end up being better because of the questions that we ask or because of the points of view that we bring to the table. Because between Newport News and Petersburg, we have a lot, a lot, a lot to celebrate because of the wonderful nature of our people, but we got some issues that we are continuing to work on. So when these housing bills would come in, wait, 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 you know. And so a lot of our questions came from more of the viewpoint of smaller landlords or tenants. And so a lot of good conversation happened from that. Delegate Erin does not have a problem asking a question in committee. And so I love working with her. One of the things that we found is that people were getting evicted for like 300, 400, 500. And a lot of them, if they just had a little bit more time to pay- And a lot of them, if they just had a little bit more time to pay, this is before COVID, but if they just had a little bit more time to pay, then they would have been able to stay in their homes. And we don't have to tell you how absolutely detrimental an eviction is, not just to the immediate, but for the long term as well. Like, it takes so long to get over that and to get over these hits to, you know, economics. And when people are losing their homes, but then you have another segment of, you know, folks who are like open, open Virginia backup way too soon during the pandemic, and they're talking about generational wealth. It's like, you know, it's, it's night and day. But this would mandate the, the landlords to offer a payment plan to a tenant prior to an eviction. And so we're really looking forward to what we might be able to do with that bill. Got some really great conversation with the stakeholders that represent tenants and landlords about this because one thing we know, it takes time, like Delegate Erin said, to get all that information about the relief programs and things out to people. So that moratorium is important. But we also have that rent and mortgage relief program that is being run at the state level. And then some localities like Newport News use their CARES Act money to run a rent relief program. And then on top of that, you have local philanthropy where you, you know, you have people who are just like raising money to be able to help to give it out. So I think if we're doing all of these pieces together, we will be able to keep more families in their home, which is important during a public health crisis, but also very important to economic justice as we're fighting for, you know, livable wages and things like that. Affordable, safe and secure housing has got to be a priority because it is a human right.
And I will just say, if you are facing eviction or you know someone facing eviction, please contact our office or your legislature's office because, quite frankly, I can tell you very specifically, we had an individual who had a real, he had a real eviction issue. And we were able to prevent them from, you know, being removed from their homes just by providing them with information about, you know, what they are entitled to, what their rights are and resources that are available to help them. And oftentimes, and I hope not as often as we would like, but judges don't always know. And so sometimes when you can equip someone with the information about what they're entitled to and what their rights are, they are able to take that information into court and be relieved that they need and deserve. And so don't ever hesitate to reach out to us in that regard. And I'm going to take this opportunity really quickly and answer the question that I see if Catrice is still here. She's asking about school resource officers and, you know, the impact that they're having on the school-to-prison pipeline. Catrice, we have passed legislation in previous sessions specific to school resource officers. Obviously, the conversation has taken a bit of a change as we look at police reform and criminal justice reform. And so as we make our way through this special session, I do believe I have seen legislation regarding school resource officers. And as the bill makes its way through the committee process, I'd be happy to keep you up to date. But yes, that is top of mind for us as we work through the special session.
And so for somebody that might be thinking about some of the schools that we have in Newport News and just the, the interesting situations that we might have within the school building, it is not just removing police, but is also using money to invest in people that can actually work on the issues that the students might be encountering that could result in quote-unquote bad behavior. But if you're hungry, or if you're, you know, your home life is not, you know, well, then yeah, there are going to be some behavioral issues. So let's get to the root of the issue as opposed to just punishing the behavior. And so we are looking at how we can reinvest for mental health services or, you know, actually allowing student, I mean, school counselors to be school counselors and, and reducing the ratio of students that they have. And so that is a more comprehensive look at it than what we are going to be able to do in special session, but we have that definitely on the radar.
I think Delegate Price makes a really good point as we talk about, you know, what we're able to accomplish during the special session and what we'll be able to accomplish during the session in 2021. And that makes me want to talk about how you engage. So first of all, engaged on the special session, but let's please not put all of your hope into this special session. This is really just the next leg of this journey. Again, there's only going to be so much that gets passed during the special session. You don't have every committee meeting, you don't have as much time as you typically do during the general assembly session, and members are limited to what bills that they can introduce. So not only do I need you to let me know what you are for, what you are against during the special session, but I also need to have you keep the pressure on those members that are not naturally aligned with these issues so that they know your position and that they are more likely to support some of these priorities that we're trying to work through. But don't stop there. The 2021 session, if there was not the same pent-up demand for criminal justice reform, for police reform, for the necessary change that needs to be made to some of these policies, there will not be the same level of attention and/or prioritization on these types of bills. And so you can't just have all of this pent-up demand for the special session and then get, you know, disillusion when it comes time to prepare for the 2021 session. So we need you to engage, not just right now, but throughout this period of time. And so all of that is going to be critical to the long-term success.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, like, you know, headlines are going to come out. Like today, the governor was probably covered for what they put forth in the budget. Probably some of our drama with, you know, back and forth over procedural stuff is going to make it. But no matter what paper covers it, you do not need to read it in the paper for you to know that we would not even be talking about police reform or criminal justice reform if it were not for those of you that were on the front line, creating the pressure, creating the atmosphere such that, I mean, bills we have carried before that like no one was really paying attention while we were trying to make us think is now all the rage and like, oh, well, how can we get this done? How can we get this done? And it's because y'all were loud. And so we appreciate the opportunity to co-create this new future that we're walking into with you, building on the work of delegates that have gone before us. When Yvonne Miller was in, you know, delegate and Senator fighting for justice, and when Senator Louise Lucas first got here, you know, and now she's running stuff. So like, this is generations worth of work. So if we stop, then we miss it. So I may not see all of this stuff come to fruition in my lifetime, but if I stop the work now, then my five-year-old nephew isn't going to see it either. And so we've got to continue this work, and we've got to continue to co-create what your demands have been now. Some of y'all be demanding stuff that we already are working on. So I need y'all to read the link that I just put. We have the Virginia Legislative Black Caucus Session Agenda up there. So y'all don't have to write us mean emails demanding justice. If it's already on our agenda, we are working on it, and we would love to, to have you as a partner, you know, working on these things. And if there is something missing, something from your lived experience that we may have overlooked or may not know about, please reach out to us. We are open. And so I've also put the link for our Virginia Legislative Comment, Public Comment, Virginia Legislative Black Caucus Public Comment, because we want to hear that information. And I'm gonna tell you, it comes to us. I read it. Our wonderful executive director, Adele, has sent out the public comments, and it was very interesting to hear your personal stories and how, how justice really is just a buzzword in some of your lived experiences. And we're trying to make that a reality. So that's the work that we're doing. What's next, Delegate Erin?
Well, after we get through passing the procedural resolution, we will begin the committee process. The procedural resolution will allow us to conduct the rest of our business virtually. So I really need you to continue to engage with Delegate Price and myself because we will be posting the link to observe the committee meetings. This is where the work is done. This is where the debate will occur. This is where bills will pass or fail and make it to the floor, virtual floor, or how be it or not. And so we need you to continue to engage virtually, even though you would have showed up in a committee meeting to testify in the past, you have come down to the Capitol. You do not have that opportunity this time, but you're at home. So I hope that means you're that much more flexible and/or you can, you know, access the committee meetings from your mobile devices electronically, however you connect. But we need you to continue to engage because when it comes time to talk about some of these really sensitive issues, it's so much better to put a face with a personal issue, and that truly does impact the way someone votes. And so we're not there yet, but soon we will be putting out the links to how you can participate in these virtual committee meetings and so that you can be fully on record with your support or opposition to this legislation.
Yep. And we just got a comment from a one delegate, Jeff Born. And so we want to say shout out to Jeff Born. He has been working very hard with the activists and advocates on the Marcus Alert, which was what I mentioned earlier, and how it will help just de-escalate situations, especially with those with mental health or developmental disabilities, just so they can be treated in ways that do not criminalize the experience that they may be going through. He's also doing some heavy lifting on getting rid of qualified immunity so that such, if there is an, an instance of an abusive force or excessive use of force, that the family members of those that may be killed or harmed by that have some core, you know, action that they can take, where right now it often never goes anywhere, there never charges. And so I want to say a shout out to that. He gets me in good trouble all the time. He is like a direct link to the legacy of John Lewis, because if you are around him, you're going to get in trouble. But hopefully it's that good trouble. So shout out to you, Jeff Born.
Shameless plug, as we begin to wrap up, is please join me on August the 25th at 7:00 PM. You can join right back here on Facebook. I will be joined by many friends to break down the special session. By then, hopefully, we will be further along in the process. You'll hear more about the legislation that's being introduced this session, and you'll have another opportunity to ask some additional experts your questions.
And there is a question about education and the budget. And when we started off, we said, give us a little time. We got to read through this. We didn't want to just come off the cuff with estimates and things. We want to know what we're talking about, what's in it. And so, you know, you know Delegate Erin and I will be back, and you can go to, to her town hall. I'll be having some, some other meetings as well. We're doing chat rooms for tenants, and we'll do a whole bunch of stuff. But we don't want to just talk without having fully read it yet because it just got released this morning. And of course, we've been in session, so we will get back to you on those specifics. And then what's a happy thought, Delegate Erin? Because this was a little heavy. What's a happy thought? What, what's something else that you're working on outside of special session that you like? Or did you go anywhere fun for summer?
My happy thought is that being in this in virtual environment has allowed more citizens, in my opinion, than ever before to take the time to actually connect and weigh in, and I'm extremely grateful for that. Every single email that we receive, we try and make a concerted effort to respond to. Those emails actually do make it to me. And so please just keep contacting us. Please keep sending your personal situations. We want to try and help you work through those and/or referring people to us that might be in need during this time. And so just thank you so much for engaging because that really is what this role is all about.
Yes, and my happy thought is, I asked you for one. I did not have one. No, but it was really, it was like, as an extrovert that's been like pandemic, like inside this whole time, it was really good to see you guys. It was really good to be, at least to be able to feel your energy and to, to be reminded of the reckoning squad and what it is that we're doing. Shout out to Delegate Lamont Bagby. Shout out to Delegate Jay Jones. This is on my personal page, so I'm able to say who is running for Attorney General of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And both of our names are listed as endorsers. Shout out again to Jeff Born and then Delegate Erin and I. And so this has been At Ease with Sia and LaSharice, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.